Call to order, City of Forest Park, City Council meeting, July 6, 2021. Let us first stand for pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the clerk call a roll, please?
Brown.
Here.
Clark.
Here.
Irving.
Here.
Poe.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Say, motion, Councilman Irving.
I would move to excuse Councilman Sylvester.
Second.
It's been moved in a second that we excuse Councilman Sylvester. Is there any discussion? During not all those in favor of the motion to excuse, let it be known by the sign of voting, aye.
Aye.
Pose, Councilman is excused. Item number two is the minutes you received copies of, all the copies of minutes in your packets. Are there any additions or changes in the minutes? Hearing none, the minutes will be, the minutes will be approved as presented. Item number three is presentations. There are no presentations at this point listed on the agenda. So we would then move to item number four, communication from the public. And let me, let me say first and foremost that this is the first meeting that we've had in county, in chamber, obviously, since the beginning of what was the starting of the pandemic. Obviously, as you can see for yourself, we have, we're still observing spacing. For those of you who would feel more comfortable if you, for wearing masks, you may do so. We did not require that at this, at this meeting. We're going to take it step by step and meeting by meeting, depending on the number of people who show up and what we feel is the safest things to do. And given that, let me say, this is the time for citizens to come out and comment on matters before council or to ask questions of concern to them. When recognized, please come forward to the podium, give your name and address, and then state your comment or question. Council meetings are taped recorder for ease of transcriptions. Each comment is limited to five minutes. Is there anybody from the public who would like to address the council? Please come to the podium. There should be a sheet there with a pen for you where you can sign in.
There's no sheet.
Okay, so, thank you. Oh, yeah, I didn't jump all, get all week long. I, I will, uh, talk to another person. Skip me off.
If you have something to say, I just want you to put your hand down. Good afternoon, council. My name is Aaron Washington Childs, and I just recently moved back to Forest Park within the last six or seven months. I was born and raised here. And having come back here, I've noticed that some of the resources that were here when I was growing up are no longer here, like a pool or rec center or something along those lines. So kind of to piggyback off of what you were saying earlier as far as interaction with the police and community involvement, I was wondering if there's anything in the works to bring back a community center or something to help keep our kids off the street and give them something to do in the summertime so they don't have to interact with the police.
Hold in the mic, it's giving some feedback.
Okay. Did anybody hear my question?
Yes.
Okay.
You want to do that one? Or you want me to?
Well, we're always trying to look for ways to have a community center. And right now, it's budgetary, quite honestly. They're very expensive. And we're looking at ways to have what we would consider having the same services that a community center would have, but not necessarily in one particular building. So we might have a performance place that might be in one building. We might have a, a health center that might be in another building and so on. So trying to provide the services is kind of where we're focusing right now and bringing some of the services back. The buildings are, you know, tens and twenties of millions of dollars to build. So we obviously would love to do it, but right now, it's a budgetary issue.
And I would add to that, just so we're clear on, on process. The process for doing that would be that a group of citizens, it cannot be council. It has to be a group of citizens who will come forward with a, with a proposal. Uh, because this is, this is an issue that has to be voted on, placed on the ballot. And the citizens of the community would have to vote on it. I understood you in the beginning to say that you lived here before. You don't look old enough to have been here one, the, the last few times that that was on the ballot. But the time, during the time that I've been on council, this has been on the ballot at least two or three times. It start, like I said, it has to start with a group of citizens who come and put forth a proposal. Uh, it's a lot of work because you're talking about doing a lot of surveying. You're talking about doing a lot of cost analysis. You're talking about all of those kinds of things that would be necessary. And once that is done and brought to council, it has to be citizens driven because it would not make sense for the council to do it and then turn around and have to make a decision as to what, uh, then vote on it to do it. Once it's put on the ballot, then it's left to the, just like any other election, it's left to the citizens to determine and decide whether or not they want to have their taxes increased by enough money to, number one, build it and number two, after it's built, now, after it's built, to continue to support it. Okay?
Yeah.
Does that answer your question?
It does.
Thank you.
All right. You got it.
All right.
There's, I mean, there's, it's not the, where, there's nothing happening either. The library is going to be a state-of-the-art facility. It's going to be a regional library that's going to have all sorts of spaces for teenagers that they can go to. That's not just after school, but on the weekends. It's going to have community space, you know, so to speak, that have large rooms. It's going to have some outdoor space as well. And, you know, we've all been all in on that and supportive. We've been working with our director of development and city manager on that project, and we had to kind of, we had to get some grit, yeah, get a little gritty in there to make sure that we were getting in, um, you know, that we were a city that actually got that project. And we did get that, and it's coming.
Councilman Hurry.
Oh, no, I was going to piggyback on what you had said, but you mentioned it. Uh, it's not just the amount of money that it costs to build it. It's the amount of money that you have to have in your budget to continue to support it. And that's also a piece that, that is often overlooked, so.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else want to address council on an issue? If so, please come up and sign in. There is a sheet for you to, to sign in on.
First, let me say good afternoon. My name is James Houston. I live at 988 Havensport Drive. Longtime standing resident here in Forest Park, served on some of your committees here and so forth. So, good afternoon and thanks for this opportunity. But my purpose here is the afternoon is I'm very unhappy about what happened last Monday. The day before July. I am here, I have a bucket of trash that I picked up personally in my yard, on the front, on the back, on the patio, on the front. There's still some on the roof of my house. I can't get to that. It's still up there. If you don't believe, we can go out and take a look at it. I am very unhappy because this is a lot of trash. It's dangerous. I just had new roof put on my house. This stuff could cause fire. And just look at all this trash here. I don't even think you see it. This is nothing but splinter. This will catch fire very easily. All kinds of paper stuff, trash, you name it, it's in here. I am very unhappy. I had to get out and pick up all this. Not in the best of health, as you might know. Bad knee, bad shoulder, pacemaker. I have been like, I don't know what this kind of works. But I try to keep my house in a decent shape. I'm very proud of, very proud of Forest Park resident. I always have been, and I lived here and worked here. I was there. But I understand that there is a law that is pinned on books about shooting fireworks in Ohio. To my knowledge, that's not a law here. It may become, who knows, but I am very unhappy with this kind of trash being picked up. Now, not only my house, but the next door, down the street, I talked to my next door neighbor. Monday was the day before trash day. People very chimes, he picked this up and put it in the trash. I said, no, I came up here, tried to speak to somebody. I said, no, we need to go to the forest net. I saw another community member, he had his blower. He blowing out in the street. What's going to happen? They're going to sue. That's not a good idea. Thank you, the fact it's going to affect all of us in the long run if all this stuff is put down into the sewer. This is a lot of trash paper, so I'm actually able to do something about it. I'm not happy with this. And I don't want to have to go through this again, so that's my plea to you is to consider us to do something about it.
Mr. Houston, I, I think you and I are on the same page, and I think we've talked about this before. The unfortunate part of it is, uh, starting with what you were saying first about the law. The law is changed. It's going to be changed. Uh, it will take effect fairly soon, if not already, because the governor has signed the budget bill. Prior to that, even the old law made no sense. The old law said that you couldn't sell fireworks in Ohio. Now you can legally sell them in Ohio. The old law said you can sell them, but you can't use them. But now you got to be able to do both. It's, it's not good law. It hasn't been good law in the past. It's not good law now. Uh, the, the most unfortunate part of it is, even with the new law, it's almost next to impossible to enforce. It's a little bit like the, the noise law. If we don't actually see it being broken, there's absolutely very little that can be done about it. Uh, I know that both our police department and our fire department, uh, every, every holiday, these guys are on pins and needles because they know that they're going to get all kinds of calls about, what do you do? You know, can't you stop this or can't you stop that? I don't know about the rest of you, but it, it would have been Saturday night, I believe, or maybe Sunday night. I was awakened with what I thought was a very severe thunderstorm, and it wasn't. And it went from like one o'clock to like three thirty, four o'clock in the morning. And if, and you're right, you, you go out the next morning, the first thing you want to do is look up on the roof and make sure that it didn't burn a hole in something or whatever. But, you know, I, I, I'm just going to be honest with you. I don't know what, what, if anything, we can do about it because if we don't see it, we can't find anybody. We can't ticket anybody. We can't arrest anybody. And there, there are people out there who have very little or absolutely no regard for their neighbors, their neighborhood, or, or anything. We, this is one that I'm, that we're definitely open for suggestions, and I know the chief is. If anybody can tell us anything that we can do to, to make, to make it better, we'd be glad to. But it's just a matter of when do we start and how do we do it? You know, people will say, well, this is a matter of education. It's not education. People know that it's dangerous. Doesn't stop them from doing it. They continue to do it over, and I'm afraid because now it's quote legal to sell them in Ohio, it's going to get worse. Because you don't, now you don't have to go across the river. You can go down to Myers, you go to Walmart, you can go wherever they're selling them and buy them. Yes, quickly.
I was going to ask John, um, because this is a state law, can we restrict its use in our city?
No.
I don't think so.
General, is this due out there?
As I said, if, if anybody's got any suggestions, let us know and, and we will follow up on them. But, you know, I, I wish I could tell you what to do. Uh, you know, the things that I would tell you to do would be illegal and it would probably hurt you more than it would hurt, yeah. It would hurt, you know, you'd end up suffering more than the people who are doing it. But thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Okay.
One dollars to bless her heart. She kept up all night long.
Yeah, I know.
It's terrible.
Okay, anyone else want to address council?
Mr. Mayor, I think, I think Councilwoman Clark had a, had a comment regarding.
No, I'm like, ah!
Go ahead.
Oh, uh, uh, there's a couple of things. Since it's state law, we can't restrict it. Um, I think it's just, it might be a matter of degree, uh, like it's a degree of control versus people celebrating the holiday. Um, however, is going from the opposite end of restriction, um, is there any way that we can permit designated use in this particular area? Maybe the city take over a Fourth of July, and I don't know if we want to expend more tax dollars and, and police manpower to this, but city can designate a, a area where, um, the city will celebrate and have Fourth of July fireworks, so that way people are less inclined to purchase their own um, because they can anticipate, um, attending another potential event. I mean, we are about, if we're about community and we're creating community events, I think that might be something that we could potentially look into if we, I mean, it would be kind of interesting to see a line item on the budget about fireworks, but.
Well, I, I can tell you, and for some of those people who've been around for long enough, there was a time when the city did sponsor. Uh, I think we did it over at Forest, what was Forest Fairball? I don't know what the new name is this week.
I know.
But we did.
Yeah.
We did it. Uh, it, it did not, it, it will not curtail those people who want to do their own, you know, from, uh, there are different kinds and types of fireworks. There are people who want to, you know, the, the more dangerous they are and the bigger they are, you know, those are the ones that people are going to continue to do under the cover, so to speak. Even if you had, it's not to say that, uh, you know, we can't look into doing, uh, some event. But, uh, you know, the, another part of the problem is there's so many holidays that people, you know, they don't do them just on one holiday anymore even, or just one day. Especially when you got a three-day, four-day weekend. It's got to be like every, yeah, all, the whole night, yeah. Okay, let's move on to the next person. Anybody else? Please come up and sign in, tell, tell us who you are and what your issue is.
Good evening, everyone.
Hi, Shirley.
Uh, my name is Shirley Miller. I am a longtime resident of Forest Park. I was here when they was building. Matter of fact, when all the, my street wasn't even full of houses when I moved in.
Lincolnshire.
That's right. And now we are running over. Uh, anyhow, the reason I'm here is because I'm a member of, um, the center, the senior center. And I feel like, uh, well, see, we was playing card games down there two days a week, four hours a day, two days a week. And I feel like we've been ousted out of those two days. We have been replaced with silver sneakers three days a week. They've taken in the days that we had, the time that we had, and I want to know why. I don't want nobody to tell me we're taking baby steps. We're trying to figure this out. I've already figured it out, but I'm not going to tell you what I figured out, um, at this time. But, uh, I'm a heavy taxpayer here. Of course, you know Forest Park taxes is one of the highest in, in the state, in Cincinnati anyhow. And, uh, for me to be paying all these taxes, paying my dues to get in there uh, for two days out of a week, four hours a day, and to be now replaced by silver sneakers. If I wanted to do silver sneakers, I would do this. I know where to go and to get it, where to do it at. I don't need you to ram it down my throat to tell me this, that you're doing it for my benefit. No, it's not being done for my benefit. You know, I didn't get this old by having someone tell me what's good for me. I know what's good for me. And what's good for me is to get back in there where I pay taxes and do what I want to do, what I was enjoying doing. Now, I want to know why this happened and what are we going to do about it? I don't want you to tell me that, um, we're working on this. We have to space it out where you sit six feet apart. You all are not sitting six feet apart right now. You know, don't tell me we cannot play cards there because the cards carry germs. When you go in the grocery store and you touch that meat, how much germs do you think that meat is carrying? Who do you think, how many people do you think was touching that meat, the canned goods and bags, before you touched it? Especially the meat because it's raw, you know? But you're going in touching it, everybody else done touched it and played with it. But you're going to tell me we cannot, uh, bring food in because of the germs? We didn't get this old by not knowing how to take care of ourselves. We know when to wash our hands. We have had to ask for toilet paper for the women's room. We have had to ask for soap for the women's room. We have asked, had to ask for paper towels for the women's room. The men never had to ask for any because they kept, because they never used it. See, you know, they're the nastiest people there is, you know? But you're going to tell me it's for our benefit? No, you know, um. When am I going to get back in there? Don't tell me we're working on it. Uh, we're working on it right now. We're going to put it on the calendar. Let's do it now. You know? Tear up this old calendar where you gave silver sneakers three days a week and gave me none.
Okay, Shirley. Uh, well, Ms. Miller, I'm sorry.
All right, that's all right.
Okay, I'll, let me start, let me go backwards and then come up to where you are. Starting about how we got to where we are. Obviously, uh, the pandemic. It was up, up until the end of June, we were following all of the rules and regulations that were set up, set down to us by the governor's office. At before, when we knew that that was going to end, the senior advisory board. Now, I, I'll be honest with you. I don't know who all those people are. I think I maybe know two of those people that are on there. The senior advisory board met. They made the recommendations as to when and what they thought should be done in the center and in what timeline. As far as the silver sneakers program goes, what they had recommended was the line dancing would start. Line dancing and silver sneakers were to start at the same time, starting back. Uh, line dancing, the only reason that you don't see line dancing on the calendar is because the gentleman, the person who was hired to teach that class did not, would not make himself available until a time that he wanted to start. The person who was doing the silver sneakers class agreed to start earlier. Now, those classes should not run past noon. Your, your card playing, our card playing, because I'm over there too, starts after, after twelve o'clock. So there would be no conflict between those classes and card play. Now, in, in relative to why they didn't start the card playing and the Pacino and the Domino's back at the same time, it was their recommendation that, that not be started now. Now, I'm not saying that their recommendation was right and right or wrong, but I'm telling you that's where the recommendation came from. Now, since that time, and since I know Dawn has gotten calls, I've gotten calls, we have made, you know, we've said, okay, obviously, this is not a popular decision and it's one that we probably need to change and or do something about. But the other part of that is, we don't want to necessarily, how can I put this? We don't want to necessarily dictate to the advisory board what they have to do and when, but I can tell you that they are going to be asked, told, to meet again, to reevaluate and reconsider this. And I can guarantee you, and I think Dawn will too, that that's going to be changed and that people will be allowed to move back in there and do the things that they used to do. Now, I will also tell you, so it won't come as a surprise to nobody, we are going to have some conditions uh, because based on what we are being told by the county health department and others, it would, it would not make sense not to. Now, uh, probably one of those conditions is going to be that for a period of time, people are going to be required to wear masks. Now, we're not going to go to that extreme of saying, you also have to show us that you've had your vaccination because I think our attorney will tell us that that may not be safe ground for us right now. But that's going to be one of the conditions. Now, as far as who touches what and who touches who and that kind of thing, that's something that we're just going to try to stay away from, you know? Each person is going to have to make his or whole, his or her own decision about how much of a safety precaution each individual wants to exercise. But, um, as I said, I, I can, I can pretty much guarantee you that, uh, in the very near future, you'll be back over there. Now, I will say this while we're talking about Pacino and, and Big Whiz. I don't have, I don't get that much of a, much static from the, uh, domino players, but hopefully, it's going to be a little bit quieter. It's going to be a little less volatile, us card players, some of us. You know, we, we can't, especially some of our Big Whiz players, you know, we can't, um, we can't replace tables, so you got to stop beating on the tables like you do when you're there. But, uh, and especially Pat, okay? So, uh, I, I would just ask you to do this. This is, uh, our last meeting, council's last meeting before recess, just like every year. We meet the first Monday in August, then we take our summer break through to, uh, after Labor Day. I would say that probably prior to our, prior, you know, wait, before we go on our break in August, between now and then, we have one more council meeting, which is two weeks from yesterday. Uh, I'd say that you can be sure that things will have returned to as close to normal as possible.
I accept that.
Okay? No. I ain't telling them.
I was on that committee at one time. And those people that only committed, they are violent because they do not like to play cards. They like to line dance. They do not play games.
I understand, Pat.
They do not do a thing.
I understand.
You're going to be on that committee, you got to be.
Pat, I understand. We are going to, let's not get into who, who did what to whom. Let's, let's just get into. We're going to get you back in there, all right?
That's what's going on. That's what's going on. That committee. That's what's going on, that committee.
I noticed on the calendar, they have Bingo. Bingo is a card game. They, they, oh, wait a minute, they dish, they dish out cards like we do in Pacino. Everybody got their own card. Bingo is on there for several, several weeks. That's a card game. They touch things and we touch things. We, you know, we don't mind wearing a mask.
Okay, let me, let me, let me ask you a question because I don't know. I'll just ask him, is that, um, I'm not aware of Bingo. I'm not, you know, I, I take your word for it, but I, I don't, is that a city? Is that a city thing or is that, uh, for somebody, uh, a group that grants it? I don't know. I'm asking.
This is part of the.
This is the email. Bingo is just like Pacino, actually. Yeah, but it's the same.
No, 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 that's not what I mean. But is it, is it an activity that's part of the senior center from the city? Or is it a, uh, activity of, of some other group? I don't know. I'll find out. It is ours and, and you're right, it's the same thing now. Okay, now, uh, you know, I'm, I can't answer all your questions about what group, what activities they have, which ones they don't. You know, the only ones I know about are the ones that I participate in, basically. Or when somebody calls me about one that's going on. I, I know we have Pacino because I'm over there. I know we have, I, I know we do Bid Whiz because I'm over there. I, I know that the guys do Domino's because I'm, I'm there. Uh, I even, you know, I, I know that we go to the casino. Maybe we shouldn't say that on camera, but we, we, we do that because I do, you know, I go to that. But some of the, you know, I don't, I'm not going to, you know, assume that I know all of the things that are over there, but, but you're right, it's, it's no different in those two. But, but just, you know, for, for the sake of time and this discussion, I, I would just ask you to just give us a few, gi- give us a little time to get this together. And we're going to, you know, we're, we're going to give the committee time to reevaluate and rethink, and Dawn and I will, will make our positions known as to why we think we should go back to as close to normal as possible. And as soon as that happens, uh, everybody will, will be informed. The other thing that I have, uh, uh, requested to be done is when the committee meets, there should be some reporting back to the group of that, what the committee has done. And on the other end of it, when the committee is going to meet, there should be some mechanism for the larger group to have input into things that are going to be discussed in their meetings. So those are some of the kinds of things that will happen, will be changed. Uh, and like I said, you know, give, give me the benefit of the doubt. I'll get you back, we, we'll get you back over there where you need to be. And, uh, I want to, as far as food, Shirley, uh, I know that we do a lot of products over there. Some of us don't really need it, but we do it, and we will continue to do that as well. Yes, ma'am, one final thing.
Uh, do you, would you accept some suggestions from our group? As to how, you know, how we could, uh, get around some of the problems that, uh, who sent that email out, whoever sent that email, but they got, you know, Jay, uh, Dennis said.
Uh, yeah, other, other problems dealing with the operation of the center, that should come to Rebecca or Jay or, or, uh, to Dawn. You know, I, I don't, I think it would be inappropriate for us to discuss those in this kind of setting. But to answer your question, can you, is there a mechanism for you to make suggestions? Yes, that, that would be, uh, the phone number still is, you know, five nine five fifty two. And.
Who do we call?
Just also, we, we have a new receptionist that, we have a, a receptionist since pandemic at the desk, and she will take any calls from anybody about anything that involves the city, and she'll make sure that it gets passed on to the, uh, appropriate person.
I said to Jay.
I, uh, I called today, Lillian Griffiths for Donnie Jones. To see if he could sit down with a, a group that's, uh, interested in getting back into the center.
Eyes out from one thirty till six.
Right. She said, would you give me your, give you my message and you could call me back and set up? Because I thought that was appropriate. We come to you.
That's a perfect setup.
Look, we have ways that we think that we could get back in the center safely. And, okay.
We'll take their suggestions and we're going to get you back in.
If you and Jay could sit down with us at your convenience.
That, that will be, you know, th- those things will be, uh, Smith will be fine. Go ahead.
Just one question, only one. Do you have any minutes of any meeting that the advisory board has?
I don't, I, I.
Does anyone?
That I can't ask.
In the facility, in far as talk, having?
That I can't answer. I, I, I would have to defer to the city manager who will find that, get that information for you.
Please do, let me see just one.
All right. Okay.
I have another question.
Yes, ma'am.
According to the email we got from Jay, where, you know, we're not allowed to bring food or anything in. But then they put on the calendar, root beer flow, that's food, that's what, that's what they put, that's definitely make it, you know, I don't understand.
Well, again. Again, one, you know, again, you know, I don't want to get into, you know, I'm, I'm not going to micromanage. I'm not going to say, Jay, you have to do this, Jay, you have to do that. That's, that's his job. Now, decisions that, that have been made regarding the senior center will be reviewed, as I said earlier, and whatever we find out that we can do, we will do. So, you know, I'm not going to sit there and tell you that we're going to do everything that everybody suggests to us, because that's not, you know, that's, that, that's just not going to happen. But to the best of our ability, we'll get you back in there, and we're going to be as close to normal as we possibly can. And right now, that's, that's the best I can do on it. And as I said before, just, you know, take my word for it and give us, give us, give us some time to get there. Okay? Anybody else?
My understanding is that the senior advisory board's meetings are on the calendar. I would think that, that that would be a good venue for you to go and to talk with them when they meet and express your concerns and express your ideas. The input could flow directly to the advisory committee.
Okay. Well, thank you all for coming. Just, just sit quietly until we get to the other point.
Mrs. Smith, do you have another comment?
No.
I have a question though. With Diane's, what she just said, uh, with the advisory board, is, uh, Donnie Jones and Jay Dennis in that meeting with the advisory board?
I, no, that's, that's Jay's advisory board.
Yeah.
But now that everybody's back and we're starting to come back in, everybody be more, you'll see them, you'll see the calendar, it'll be more visible. And I think the communication sounds like the issue here, you know? It hasn't, maybe we didn't do a good enough job communicating to everybody and making sure that, that everything was heard. So I think as people start coming back, we should communicate better. At least that's the plan.
Okay, well, thank you all, uh, and we will now move to the next item. But before we do, as always, if you choose to stay for the remainder of the meeting, you may do so. You don't have to, of course, we'll be glad to have you. But, uh, if you want to leave, you feel free to do that too. We're not putting you out, we're just giving, and, and for those like Smith who comes to all of the meetings, know that this is the process. After the, after this session, I take a pause so that people who have to leave or want to leave can leave. So you're not being treated any differently than, than we do anybody else. I'm not going to, I'm not going to say, Shirley, get out, okay? Because she wouldn't anyway. So thank you all very much, we appreciate it, and we, we will follow up with you, that's for sure. Thank you. Mrs. Smith? Mrs. Smith, take your regular seat. As soon as we can, Pat, I can't give you a day of time right now, but it will be as soon as we can. I can't, I don't have any day of time. I'll let you know.
And I forgot to turn it off.
It will, it will be before we go on our break.
Couple of weeks.
Yeah.
Thank you. Call another advisory board meeting and tell them what they need to do.
Exactly. I just want to get over, didn't want the, the food trucks to start back. I want them to start back with the goodies. Oh, boy, I'm telling you. All right. We will, we will now continue. Mrs. Smith, you'll be right back, right? Okay. We'll move to item number six, reports of standing committees, the first of those being community development, councilwoman Moore.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I would like to address Mr. Washington, um, to encourage you that we do have Park and Recreation meetings once a month on Wednesday, the first Wednesday of the month. So if you have any ideas for youth programs or young adults or, um, that is the place to come to present, um, any activities you want to present in the community. Um, also, We Thrive, um, we meet, um, the third Wednesday of the month, and, um, that's a health initiative for the residents. Um, so if you have any ideas around activities, fitness, um, that's a great, um, committee to join. It's for the residents, and the residents make decisions, um, regarding programming in our community. So it is a, um, a resident-led, um, organ, uh, committee. And so, and so thank you for coming to council today, we really appreciate you. Um, and we have been having those conversations in Park and Rec regarding more activities for the youth and for young adults, because we have a lot of young adults and youth in our community, and we need more activities for them. So thank you for coming, um, we appreciate you spending your time with us. Um, Park and Rec meets the first Wednesday of the month, um, and so they have, um, um, with COVID, um, restrictions being, um, up, lifted up, so they'll be meeting soon. Um, and then We Thrive, we meet, um, Wednesday, the third Wednesdays. Um, that's usually three to four, and that's virtual as well until we are back in person. So we welcome, um, new ideas. Thank you. And volunteers.
Okay. Councilwoman, Councilwoman Moore, I have no items on the agenda for you for the work session of the 12th. Do you have anything to add?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I want to thank, uh, Mr. Jones, our city manager and our public works department. Um, if you haven't noticed throughout the community, um, there are flags up in honor of the, uh, Fourth of July. And so we have a lot of, um, um, veterans, and we had that conversation of, of being more prideful for our residents and honoring, um, holidays regarding our residents. So thank you for the flags. If you look up in the, um, uh, on the main, um, gateways to our community, you're going to see flags. And so thank you for listening to us, and, um, we really appreciate that. So when I was driving around the city, I always drive around the city to see what's going on in, in the, um, um, in the different, um, um, streets. And, um, I was just very prideful and honored to see the flags, and it represents, um, our community that we, we do honor, um, um, those who serve and those who, um, um, different various holidays. Um, and then second, mentioning, um, youth events, um, Hamilton County Job and Family Services has, um, still has application process open for youth jobs, fourteen to eighteen. So if we can put that on our website, um, and, and, um, send our, our families to that site, because I remember working at fourteen in one of the programs used, well, not that many years ago, but, um, but, um, it, it teaches leadership, uh, leadership skills, um, work ethics. And so we want to make sure that we connect our youth to county programs. And so, um, that completes my report.
Okay. Any questions for Councilwoman Holt?
More.
No items for you, do you have any to add?
No, I do not, thank you.
Next committee report is human resources, councilwoman Holt. Can I say more? Sure, for twice, didn't I?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, we, we have been interviewing people for boards and commissions, and we still have a few openings on the beautification commission. Um, we have, we can take an additional three people on that. Uh, we have none on economic development. Everybody wants to be on economic development. We don't have any openings for that. Environmental awareness board of directors, we have two vacancies on that. Uh, Parks and Rec, we interviewed a, a young man early on before the pandemic, and we recommended him, but as Dr. Moore said, they have not met again. So as for the Parks and Recs now, we don't have any openings on that. Planning commission, we don't have any openings. Stormwater utility board, there's one opening on that. And on the, um, and that's it. Those are the, um, boards and commissions that we have openings on. And if you're interested in them, you can give us a call at the city, and we'll be happy to speak with you. As a liaison for the beautification commission, uh, the flags, uh, went out last weekend to say it was challenging, it's, it's, um, an understatement, but it was very challenging. It was also challenging for the, um, for the citizens because of COVID. The date got pushed out, and it rained, rained, rained. We had, um, volunteers that, you know, that were unable to fulfill the, um, the job, so they pulled out. But needless to say, I think it went fairly well. I did go out the next day and put out a few more flags because we got calls about that. But I did do some explaining that it's, it, it, first of all, it's, it's objective, but there are certain criterias that's required for people to receive a flag. It just doesn't mean putting out some flowers, which I really appreciate. It doesn't mean, you know, you put out fake flowers and you got to get a flag. And, but I appreciate, you know, all the work that people did, and I would like to send a big shout out to all of the judges that helped us with this task. With that, it would conclude my report.
Uh, any questions for Councilwoman Holt? Councilwoman Holt, I don't have any items on the agenda for you for the work session. Do you have any to add?
No, I do not, thank you.
Next committee report is internal, uh, intergovernmental relations and communication. I have no report. I would answer any questions if there are any. Uh, I would ask the, uh, city attorney, uh, John, when you give your report, if you have the information available, if not, maybe at the next meeting, uh, to just let the public know what the, uh, court schedule is for between now and, say, Labor Day. Thank you. Next committee report is Mr. Brown, law.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have no, uh, committee report at this time, nor do I have any items to add to the agenda.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Mr. Sylvester's not here, I have no report from him. So we will go to public safety committee, councilwoman Clark.
Oh, thank you. I'm not going to read that report. Uh, no, I just, uh, gave that, we'll, we'll talk about that later, I guess. Um, the only thing I have to, um, say is that a lot of the, um, a lot of our residents are going on vacation. I don't know if you are aware, but our de- department does have what's called house checks. And so if you call five nine five fifty two twenty, um, they will, you know, pay extra attention to your home while you are away.
Okay. Okay, then the next, any questions for councilwoman Clark? Every now and then, next report is ways and means, councilwoman Herbie.
And I have no report tonight.
Uh, no items on the agenda for you for the meeting. I, I want everybody to make a note that, uh, we'll be having a ways and means committee meeting on next Monday. And the purpose for, the primary purpose for that meeting, and I will send it out, uh, have Sally to send it out to you. As you recall, I mentioned it last week, but back before the pandemic, we had started to work through, uh, making, uh, reviewing changes that might be necessary in the council code, in the codes. So I will, if you, if you can't find your copy of the codes and need one, Sally, would you make sure that every, all the members of the council get another copy of that? And I will, uh, send to you the changes, uh, the, the things that we've talked about up to that point. Uh, so you should have that, okay?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I think you said ways and means committee, you mean work session?
Work session next Monday. Uh, uh, you'll get. Work session next Monday. Uh, uh, you'll get a notice, and, uh, the clerk will send you the, a copy of that, of the code. Uh,
It's a work session, it's a work session.
Work session on the 12th. Yes, sir.
If I could interrupt you.
Yes, sir.
If you don't get a copy in what you consider timely fashion, you can just Google search Forest Park ordinances and look for the site that will be American Legal Publishing. That's who publishes our code, and the full code is on there.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Okay, next item on the agenda then would be the mayor's report. Uh, just briefly, I was going to report on the senior senators, but we've al, we've already covered that one pretty much. Also, I'd just like to, first of all, thank the Beautification Commission, uh, Committee. They worked real hard trying to put this together, uh, trying to overcome some of the, uh, obstacles that we've had in the past, primarily in terms of making sure we had enough volunteers. Uh, I think this year, at one point, we did have the number of volunteers that we thought we would need to do this, but as, uh, was said by Councilwoman Holt, uh, because of COVID, but primarily because of weather and people had other things coming up, we lost some of those. So, as usual, um, uh, our, our staff, primarily Rachel, and, and also, uh, Vice Mayor Holt and myself, we, uh, got out and handed out flags and judge yards, and, and I can tell you, i- it's getting more and more difficult to do. Uh, I think for a number of reasons. One being, uh, generally speaking, a lot of the people who participate every year in terms of doing their yards, you know, we're just getting older, and it gets harder for us to get out and dig in the dirt and plant flowers and all that kinds of things. So, a lot of people are looking to take shortcuts, which is fine, but they need to keep in mind that, as Councilwoman Holt said, there are guidelines that we have to follow. Uh, I saw some very beautiful lawns and flowers, but then as I got closer to them, I saw that they were all plastics, and we cannot give and do not give flags for that. Uh, there's also always been a, been a discussion of, do we give flags for plants or just flowers? And until that changed, we have to follow what the rules say, a- and we do that. Uh, one of the other things is, we ta, we try to take into consideration the total picture, the condition of the whole property. Uh, I, I had, I won't say a heated discussion, but I had a hard time trying to explain to one person that, uh, you know, when you have a couple of cars in the driveway that's sitting on blocks, you know, you may have some pretty flowers, but I can't give you a flag. You know, I, it, it just, the two things just don't work together somehow or another. But, uh, again, I'd like to thank the Beautification Commission, and more, just as important, I'd like to thank all those, those families, tho, those residents who did get out and do it. If you don't think this is a big deal, try being over here or, in her case, in my case, try the mo, try the Monday after, in terms of the number of phone calls you will get from where's my flag? I didn't get my flag. Why did they skip my neighborhood? Why did they skip my house? You know, a, and, and all of those kinds of things come into play. Uh, sometimes I think we might be better off if we just ordered enough flags and gave everybody one, but that wouldn't be the way it's supposed to work. But these, these little pennants are very, very important to people, and if, if you don't think they are, sometimes if you're at your neighbor's or near your neighbor's house, and they have their garage door up where you can look in, it's just like they've got them all hanging up from year, almost year one. And they are not going to tolerate being skipped a year to get that pennant. And some people will even, you know, they wait for you to come by so they can take it out and put it in the garage, if somebody might come over and get it. We, we have that to happen. People will call and say, I had one, but somebody came in my yard and took it. So, they, it, it's very important to people. Um, secondly, there is going on, even as we speak, I think we got about five minutes left, the party in the park, uh, an activity that, uh, was going, uh, was going, that's happening. Uh, and in, in terms of volunteers, let, let me just say this overall. This city has run on volunteers for as long as I've been here and probably even before that. But again, part of the problem is we are losing a, a lot of the people who have basically just burnt out. They've been volunteering from, from day one. Uh, people who have been volunteering for forty, fifty, sixty years. They just physically can't do a lot of these things anymore. So, I'm, I'm asking, begging, pleading for our younger citizens, please step forward and volunteer. And as Councilwoman Holt said, you know, don't just volunteer for what you might think are the, are the, you know, the very important committees. You know, we, we need people, we, we need people who will go out and, and judge yard, yards. Not just, uh, this, you know, in June, but over, over the, the winter holidays when we have the lighting. You know, you'd be surprised at how few people we get that will go drive around the city and look, looking at the lights. You know, uh, it's, we, we just need more and more people to volunteer and step forward, and one, to take pride in your city, as, as Councilwoman Moore is always saying, be proud of Forest Park. But one way of being proud of it and showing that you are is by participating. So, volunteer. You know, I, I have, I, I've, I've received a number of phone calls and letters from Waycross saying that we, we still have, the city still has a vacancy on CTVA. We, we still have that opening, and it's been there for a while, and I've called and called and called. I can't get anybody to do that. Uh, well, don't you have something o, don't you have something opening planning? Don't you have something opening on Economic Development? No, no, those are full, but guess what? This is important too. So, I'll get off my soapbox with that, uh, but please, folks, let's volunteer. So, with that, I'll answer any questions if there are any. If not, we'll go to the city manager to report. Mr. Jones.
I'll keep it quick. Uh, tonight, we're having a, uh, well, it's probably over by now, but, um, we were having a nice party in the park. It's the first one of the year, and we're going to try and have at least three, and more pop up i- as we can plan them. So, um, it's, uh, it's, we're not having the, uh, the annual one in August, the big one, the Jazz in the Park. But we are, the next one that we have planned right now is August seventh. Uh, Councilman Aaron Brown is putting together and organizing a, uh, five K bicycle and walk or run or whatever you want to do. Um, starts at ten o'clock on August the seventh. Um, show up, have some fun, bring your kids, and, um, at that point, there'll be, uh, from eleven to one, uh, again, the five K starts at ten, from eleven to one, the city will have music there. They're going to have the, uh, Yallow Band, a, a pretty, Yolo Band.
Yolo Band.
I'm going to make sure I pronounce it right. Uh, they played in a lot of our jazz, in, uh, Jazz in the Park, so very good band. We've got food trucks, have things for the kids, face painting, things like that. Just a good opportunity. It's in the afternoon on a Saturday, and, uh, good opportunity to start the day off with, uh, some fun and a nice five K and get out and meet your neighbors and support, uh, the city. We're also having a, um, we're currently trying to pick a spot and, uh, on a date, and I think we've got the date down, but I don't want to announce it yet. Uh, over the Labor Day weekend, probably that Saturday, but it's not, again, it's not finalized, we'll have the Cincinnati Pops Orchestra. Uh, so we need to find a place and a, uh, and a date for that, but we're pretty sure it's going to be the seven, that, that Saturday over Labor Day. But, uh, uh, we'll give you more information on that. We're still trying to finalize it. And, um, getting back into HR, we did, uh, if you heard earlier, we've hired four police to, four policemen. We're very happy that, I think, three of them start next week, and the other one starts the week after. That'll get a, you know, uh, get us up to a, a nice, good complement. And I want, a few weeks ago, I did, I want to put a shout again toward the Police Department, and, and the mayor was here, and I was here. Uh, Cincinnati, uh, City of Cincinnati had a, uh, cadet class that came by, and we hosted them. We were proud to host them. And, uh, uh, I'll just say it looks good for the, for the future of, uh, policing. If that group of kids, uh, I think they were from fourteen to eighteen, um, if they show up and, uh, if any of them become cops, uh, I think it's good for the, it's good for everybody. So, we were, we were happy to host them, and, um, it looks a really good group of kids. So, with that, I'll answer any questions.
Any questions for city manager?
Yes, uh, and maybe it's not for the city manager, but for the lady in the back. Um, I know that Waycross was filming, uh, the concert tonight. Are they planning on, uh, replaying it, and do we have any kind of idea of when?
Yes, it'll be replayed.
Well, I heard you say yes.
I do have that information on an email, but, um, it will be replayed. And, um, look out for it, because, yeah, thank, two thumbs up for Waycross for doing that for us. We had, again, volunteers again.
Yep.
And tonight's band was a, a Forest Park, uh, individual, and, and it's, and, um, the person doing the production was also from Forest Park. So, we're trying to keep our, um, uh, our money within the community and, and, and help out, uh, you know, the, the folks that live here. And I think, uh, we're, we're more than happy to, uh, and I think from what I saw, it was a tremendous event. I'm looking forward to the taped version of it.
Mr. Mayor, may I make a comment, um, regarding the cadets?
Yes.
Um, I had an opportunity to work out with them. It was really fun. It was our We Thrive event, um, our summer fitness. And so, um, it was maybe about thirty, forty.
Oh, yeah, at least, at least forty.
And they
Yeah, they were super.
Very respectful, and they had a great time. So, the youth can't come out and have fun. They were exercising. They were doing Zuma. We had a boot camp. Um, and, of course, I was tired at the end, but, um, but it was, we had a really good time, and we encouraged residents to come out on Saturdays. Um, we're on a break now, but August, um, sev, August fourteenth, we're going to start back up our summer fitness series. It's open to residents and their guests. Um, but, um, it was nice seeing the youth out, and hopefully we can get something here in Forest Park. Um, and so, thank you.
Erica, there were, I forget how many of those cadets, but, uh, some of them were Wynwood's High School students. Okay, we will move next to other reports, first of those being the Law Director, Mr. Waikau.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Oh, credit ordinance number ten dash twenty-one. I've had the opportunity to review the actual
Post sales contract, the title commitment, any ordinance itself, all having been approved. Uh, also had an opportunity to, uh, answer a question that Mr. Jones had, um, actually, I think someone in council had it, about trademarks, copyrights, what have you. Cities do that. In fact, I was, um, surprised, I was surprised when I saw the city of Columbus has a thirty-nine-page document about their own branding. I mean, they've gone that far.
Wow.
So, yes, that would, that, that is, uh, considered intellectual law, and you know me, that's not the, I'm not intellectual at all. Uh, so if the city were to push through that, we'd have to get a lawyer who specializes in intellectual law. It's a real special. There are very few attorneys in Cincinnati that actually do that work. Um, and then there was a question about court. Uh, our court here, the city of Forest Park, is open for business. We have been open for business. We have court every first and third Thursday, beginning at six P M. Be on time. If you're not on time, a capius is issued, and if you don't come to court, a capius is issued. And what that means is our clerk of courts will send that capius to the Bureau of Motor Vehicles, and any activity involving your license renewals or plate renewals will be frozen, and, uh, you'll be driving perhaps without a valid driver's license or invalid plates, and the problems just keep accumulating. So, you definitely want to come to court, and you can also, during the work hours of our work week, go directly to the Police Department, see our police clerk, who happens to be our clerk of courts, Julie Sheets, and take care of your ticket in advance, if it is a payoff ticket, because if you come to court, you're required by law to pay court
Costs.
Costs, which is an additional ninety dollars. So, your hundred and ten dollar fine will now be two hundred dollars. So, it's always beneficial to get over there, see the police clerk before court, take care of business. Same if you're, you know, involved in our tax court situation. You have the opportunity to go up to the Tax Department, work out your differences, and if it worked out successfully, the case gets dismissed. But you certainly don't want to miss court or delay your court proceedings because of the fact that these capiuses are now being issued now that we're well beyond the pandemic. We've been open and running in court for over, I don't know, about two months now. So, we're, uh, we're not being so forgiving anymore. People need to take care of their obligations. So, I hope that answers the court question.
Yes, yes. Thank you. Any questions for Law Director? There are none. We go to the next report. Uh, Clerk of Council, Mr. Boyd.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to report the resolution numbers twelve dash twenty-twenty-one, thirteen dash twenty-twenty-one, and then fourteen dash twenty-twenty-one, proposed as required.
Thank you. Any questions for Clerk of Council? There are none. We will go to item nine, New Business. The first, uh, item on the new business is Ordinance Number Zero-Nine-Dash-Twenty-Twenty-One, and I believe all of these items have to be read in full. Is that correct? Okay, would the clerk please, uh, read Ordinance Zero-Nine-Twenty-Twenty-One in full?
Order number zero-nine dash twenty-twenty-one, amended annual appropriations order zero-seven-dash-twenty-twenty-one, whereas ordinance number twenty-seven-dash-twenty-twenty established the twenty-twenty-one annual appropriations for the city of Forest Park, and was adopted by council on December seventh, twenty-twenty, and whereas the anticipated revenue and expenditures are coming in as anticipated for the general fund and other funds of the city, and whereas appropriations must be within available resources per the Ohio Advice Code, and whereas an amended certificate of resources is being requested from the Hamilton County Budget Commission, now therefore be it ordained by the Council of the City of Forest Park, Ohio. Section one, that the twenty-twenty-one annual appropriations ordinance is twenty-seven-dash-twenty-twenty, zero-four-dash-twenty-twenty-one, and zero-seven-dash-twenty-twenty-one, as hereby amended in the amounts listed on exhibit one. Section two, and the Director of Finance Treasurer is hereby authorized to draw warrants on the city treasury for payments from any of the foregoing appropriations upon receiving proper certification and vouchers, therefore approved by the board or officer authorized by law to approve the same, or an ordinance or resolution of council to make expenditures, provided warrants shall be drawn or paid for salaries or wages, except the persons employed by authority and, authority by and in accordance with law or ordinance, provided further that the appropriation for consen, for contingencies can only be expended upon approval of a two-thirds vote of council for items of expense constituting a legal obligation against the city, and for the purposes other than those covered by other specific appropriations herein made. Section three, be it further ordained that the Finance Director is hereby authorized to transfer advanced amounts included in the appropriation to the appropriate fund as listed in exhibit on exhibit two. Section four, this appropriation ordinance shall be enforced and take effect on its passage pursuant to the provisions of section twelve point zero-five of chapter of, of the Charter of the Municipality of Forest Park, Ohio.
Is there a motion, Councilwoman Herbie?
Yes, I move adoption of ordinance number zero-nine-dash, uh, twenty-twenty-one.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. We adopt ordinance zero-nine-dash-twenty-twenty-one. Is there any discussion?
Uh, just very briefly. From time to time, we do this annual amendment, uh, or this amen, amending of the annual appropriations ordinance. The most significant reason for, um, or this most significant aspect of this is actually to support the next ordinance, which is to cover advances, to cover, um, the purchase of, um, property that we're going to talk about in the next ordinance. So, I would urge adoption of this.
And any further discussion? There are none. Would the clerk please call the role on Order Zero-Nine-Twenty-Twenty-One?
Brown?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson? Yes. Moore?
Yes.
Ordinance number zero-nine-twenty-twenty-one passes six-zero. Next item on the agenda is item B, Ordinance Ten-Dash-Twenty-Twenty-One. Would the clerk please read this ordinance in full?
Order number ten-dash-twenty-twenty-one, an ordinance authorized by the city manager to execute all documents necessary for the purchase on behalf of the city of Forest Park of real property located at six- of real property located at six fifty Northland Boulevard, as more particularly described in the legal description as identified within the contract of real estate attached as exhibit A, made in part thereof, and declared an emergency. Whereas the city has recognized the necessity to purchase the real estate identified within the attached exhibit A. And whereas the purchase of said real estate is consistent with the goals of the city's redevelopment program. And whereas the purchase of said real estate is necessary for the public safety, health, and welfare of the City of Forest Park. And whereas since time is of the essence regarding the execution of the contract to purchase real estate and to actually purchase said real estate, this ordinance is declared an emergency pursuant to the Forest Park Code ordinance as section thirteen point ninety-six. Now therefore be it ordained by the Council of the City of Forest Park, Ohio. Section one, that the City Manager or his appointee is hereby authorized to execute all contracts and perform all acts necessary for the purchase of real estate, said real estate being described in exhibit A attached hereto, and to perform all acts of the official representative of the City of Forest Park with respect to all contractual contingencies. And for the actual closing and conclusion of purchase, including but not exclusively defiling of all appropriate legal documentation with the appropriate county authorities for the transfer of said property. Section two, that the Director of Finance and any person was authority at the time to exercise the functions of that office is hereby authorized to pay all expenditures necessary and customary and or required by the purchase contract to complete the acquisition and purchase of the property described in exhibit A. Section three, this ordinance is deemed an emergency for the reason that this ordinance is required to be immediately effective, effective in order to enable the city to fully execute and close the sale of the property, on the property within the timeframe required by the purchase, by the purchase contract. Wherefore this ordinance shall be in full force and effect immediately upon passage.
Is there a motion, Councilwoman Hurdy?
Yes, I move adoption of ordinance number ten dash twenty twenty-one.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we adopt ordinance ten dash twenty twenty-one. Is there any discussion?
Again, very briefly, as indicated in the, um, title, this is to facilitate the purchase of, um, the property on Northland, which we often identify as the tower, um, which was offered for auction. And as was indicated in the work session, the bid, the successful bid, which was ours, actually came in under the valuation of the property. Um, so I would urge adoption of this ordinance.
Any further discussion? Hearing nine, would the clerk please call the roll on orders ten dash twenty twenty-one?
Yes.
Hurdy?
Yes.
Hope?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Orders ten dash twen- uh, twenty twenty-one passes six zero. Next item on the agenda is item C, Resolution number fifteen dash twenty twenty-one. Would the clerk please read this resolution in full?
Resolution number fifteen dash twenty twenty-one. Adopting tax budget for twenty twenty-two and submitting same to the Hamilton County Auditor. Whereas the City Manager has herefore prepared a tentative budget for the City of Forest Park for the fiscal year beginning January first, twenty twenty-two, showing the detailed estimates of all balances that will be available at the beginning of the year, twenty twenty-two, for the purpose of such penalties, allowances, prorequits, and all other types of classes of revenues. Also, estimates of all expenditures or charges in or for the purpose of such fiscal year to be paid or not from the said revenues of balances and otherwise conforming with the requirements of the law. And whereas said budget has been made conveniently available to the public for inspection for at least ten days, having at least two copies thereof on file in the Office of the Director of Finance. And whereas the Council of the City of Forest Park, Ohio, has held a public hearing on said budget of which public notice was given by publication not less than ten days previous to the due date of said public hearing. Now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the City of Forest Park, Ohio. Section one, that the budget, that the budget exhibit one for the City of Forest Park for the fiscal year beginning January first, twenty twenty-two, herefore prepared for this, by the City Manager and submitted to this council, copies of which have been and are on file in the Office of the Director of Finance. Be and it is hereby adopted as the official budget of the City of Forest Park, Ohio, for the fiscal year beginning January first, twenty twenty-two. Section two, that the corporate council is hereby authorized and directed to certify a copy of said budget and a copy of this resolution and transit, and transmit the same to the Auditor of Hamilton County, Ohio. Section three, this resolution shall be in full force and be in effect upon its passage.
Is there a motion, Councilwoman Hurdy?
Yes, uh, I remove adoption of resolution number fifteen dash twenty twenty-one.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we adopt resolutions fifteen dash twenty twenty-one. Is there any discussion?
Again, just briefly, for the sake of, of people who are not familiar, who might be watching and are not familiar, this is a part of our budgeting process. And the whole purpose of this is actually, um, to provide this document to the, um, County Auditor to justify the levying of our taxes in the city. And the actual process of our working budget will take place in the fall. So I would urge adoption of this resolution.
Any further discussion? Hearing nine, would the clerk please call the roll on resolution fifteen dash twenty twenty-one?
Hurdy?
Yes.
Hope?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Resolution fifteen dash twenty twenty-one passes six zero. Next item is item D, Resolution sixteen dash twenty twenty-one. Would the clerk please read that resolution?
Resolution number sixteen dash twenty twenty-one. A resolution authorizing the City Manager to enter into an agreement with Adessa Auctions for the disposal of surplus property. Whereas the Forest Park City Council desires to dispose of surplus, surplus property. And whereas the City of Forest Park uses the services of Adessa Auctions in the past, use the services of Adessa Auctions in the past for the disposal of surplus property. And whereas Adessa Auctions is in the business of auctioning vehicles and surplus property. And whereas the City Council has determined that Adessa Auctions will advertise and auction vehicles to automotive dealers and the general public. And whereas the city had, the city also has six vehicles that have too much damage from accidents and or rust and are unsafe to be driven, which will be taken to Garden Street, Iron and Metal, Inc., to be scrapped and disposed of. Now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the City of Forest Park, Ohio. Section one, that the City Council hereby declares the property detailed in exhibit A attached hereto and made in part of this resolution as surplus obsolete and of no further use to the city and authorizes the sale of the said property without further beings, which is in the city's best interest because of the minimum value associated with this, with said property. Section two, that the City Manager hereby authorized and directed to use any alternative deemed necessary to dispose of said property, of said surplus property. Said alternatives may include, but are not limited to contracting with Adessa Auctions, negotiating with anyone expressing an interest in the property, and are refused collection. Section three, this resolution shall be in full force and take effect upon its passage.
Is there a motion, Councilwoman Hope?
I move for adoption of resolution number sixteen dash twenty twenty-one.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we adopt resolution sixteen dash twenty twenty-one. Is there any discussion?
Since this was read in full, it is suffix explanatory and I don't think it's necessary to have any further discussion on it. I just urge adoption of resolution number sixteen dash twenty twenty-one.
Any further discussion? Hearing nine, would the clerk please call the roll on resolution sixteen dash twenty twenty-one?
Hope?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Hurdy?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor? Just a question, who moved it?
Uh, Councilwoman Hope moved and Councilwoman Hurdy. Okay, the, uh, Resolution sixteen dash twenty twenty-one passes six zero. Is there any further business to come before the body of council? Any further business? Mr. Smith, did you have anything for? We're glad to see you back.
I know it's, uh, somebody on, on TV, you have like a little pancake or something, a little cross.
He might want to come in on this, come on in.
Okay, uh, just, just one, one other thing. You probably saw read in all of the material out there that the, uh, state legislature did pass the budget bill. It was signed by the governor, so that bill is there. Uh, that bill is not, it, uh, there were obviously some things in there that we, uh, municipal, that we, Forest Park, did not like, as well as other municipalities. Um, things that, uh, financially are not gonna be good for us. Uh, but as always, uh, they don't necessarily see things the way we do. Um, all I can say is, talk to your state legislature or state senator about, uh, why they did what they did. And when time rolls around, that they come to you for your support on the voting side, uh, the que- the standard question is, what have you done for Forest Park lately? Cause, uh, that's, you know, we, we, we have to keep that in mind. Uh, we can't always just look at people, uh, in terms of personalities, but hey, you know, I'm, I know it's selfish, but I, I don't, I'm not really that concerned about what happened with Corrine Township or what happens to Columbus. I'm, I'm more concerned about how things impact Forest Park. If there's no other business before the body, uh, we are hereby adjourned.